Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, February 7, 2024. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle,
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Six members present, seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband, who was a true public servant for Pittsburgh from the 1970s until 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. Political powers that were written for Pennsylvania. All power is inherent in the people and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times an inalienable and indefeasible right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such manner as they maintain proper. We have tried for over two years now to have the Bon Air school building torn down and turned into a green space. But self-proclaimed friends of the mayor and city employees are encouraging developers to buy the school. The school board would rather spend multiple times the price of the building to keep it instead of cut their losses and the taxpayers' losses. We have been harmed by the school closure and the detrimental building. Is the resistance to giving the building to the city for a dollar related to desire kickbacks? The mathematics of holding onto the building make zero sense. Can we assume that lack of logic or math skills is due to public education? Or is there a lying of pockets involved? Former Mayor Tedudo was selected to be a member of a global group of mayors. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and country. How dare he appoint a board that said the detrimental school building should remain? They did not care about the property value and quality of life issues that harmed Bon Air. This was read at my husband's funeral. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder memorial green space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Shady trees.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Ikona Halmaquina.
Good days and good day. My title is Ikona Halmaquina. I am the Grand Inca of the Air Force Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I would like to read excerpts from House Congress Resolution 331, 100 Congress in the Second Session. This is a concurrent resolution to acknowledge the contributions of the Air Force Confederacy of Nations to the development of the United States Constitution and to reaffirm the continuing government-to-government relationship between Indian tribes and the United States as established in the Constitution. In Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the Constitution, it's an excluding Indians in that tab. Whereas the original frameworkers and framers of the Constitution, most notably George Washington and Benjamin Franklin, who were known to be greatly admirers of the Constitution. Whereas the consideration of the original thirteen colonies into one republic was influenced by the political system developed by the Air Force Confederacy and as were many democratic principles incorporated into the Constitution. Whereas since the information, the formation of the United States Congress has recognized the sovereign status of the Indian tribes and the exercise of these powers were reserved by the federal government in the Commerce Clause, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three. Whereas from the treaties entered into with Indian nations and the treaties with the Delaware Indians in 1778, these things are still relevant. We as the Aboriginal American people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, and to ensure tranquility and to provide for the common event and promote the general welfare and the secure continuation of our liberties are secured in the Constitution under Article One, Section Two, Clause Three. What we want and what we desire is to live free from being molested by those who seek to usurp and continue to usurp the land. We want equitable treatment by the city of Pittsburgh in order for us to enhance and ensure that our prosperity is able to thrive. I also would like to read excerpts from House Joint Resolution Number Three. It is also a-
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Howard Philip Jackson, H.P. Jackson, E.P. Mostly N.A.C.P. Pennsylvania history. Pennsylvania is a Quaker state. Responsibility of human rights. Wow. Just think about that. The history, the journey of human rights. Black History Month. Black history every day. Leroy Ervis. Wow. A great founder to stop people of color from going to the bathroom in the basement at the state building, federal building, and Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh journey. Burr Brown. Human rights activists. A lot of these couple people that I just mentioned, men of honor, helped develop human rights. And I see the mission with this administration right now, the new administration, the history administration. The eyes is watching all of Pittsburgh right now with the new administration. And I'm blessed to be in front of it right now because the ambition, the human rights and the development of our young people, our children, how they've been redirected, redirected with the promises. Here it is, people being funded by the government. I'm a minority man. Okay. Most of us here. Here, they're getting educated across the world and come back into our country and can speak three or four different languages and being funded by the government. But isn't there a problem in the city of Pittsburgh about the education system? The academics? And now here it is, the greatest country in the world. Pittsburgh is the foundation of economics. Fort Pitt. Carnegie. The education sucks. Think about our babies. You know, from three to four and five years old, being neglected and not being educated, not being educated on human rights and development. We've been promised like, live this way, tell the truth. But our children have been manipulated and nobody's been investing in the education system for our babies. I want you to think about the responsibility. Then the chaos. We already know young people killing each other, but like, think about that last administration that shut everything down in programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our first committee is Finance and Law, sponsored, uh, chaired by myself.
Bill Number 123, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal Article Nine, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Rural Property Tax and Exemptions, Section 263.02D, Due Dates, so as to amend the discount date for the 2024 fiscal year.
Motion to approve discussion.
Approve with discussion in a second.
Yeah, I'd like to call the Director. Hello, Director.
Good morning, everyone. How are you?
Good morning.
I'm Jen Gula. I'm the Finance Director and City Treasurer.
Okay. Can you give us a brief on the bill?
Sure. So at the end of every year, with all the budget bills we pass, um, the legislation that sets the discount and gross dates for the property taxes. This year, due to mix-up and a late mailing by the vendor, we are asking to extend the due date until the 16th instead of what was actually legislated at the 12th. The bills, in fact, were printed at the 10th. So lots of confusion, but just giving people some extra time to make sure that their payments are received if they intend on receiving the discount for either gross or first installment.
All right, great. So since this won't be passed until, say, we approve it today, preliminary, and then we have final vote next week, um, I'm not even sure what the date is on there.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So the, so the, the day, the due date that's on the current bill that someone has in their house right now.
Yes.
What would that say?
The current bill, the bill that they have says the 10th.
Okay.
However, we legislated the 12th.
Right.
So it's the, it's the 12th.
Oh, interesting. Why does the bill say the 10th if we already legislate the 12th?
Right. Because they, they, when they approved the proofs, there was an issue with the dates.
Okay. So on the 13th it'll be approved, and what's the new date here?
The 16th.
The 16th. So how would they know? Is there gonna be a press release or what kind of outreach will happen?
Press release. We've actually already updated our telephone system. So if you call the Finance Department, there's a message that we'll read to tell you that we're working on extending the due date until the 16th. There's also a post online on the Finance Department website.
Okay. All right, great. Great, that's something we can share. And then is, um, so on an email that we're on together, when I was asking, when my staff was asking about this, so previously people had three weeks. Does this effectively give them the three weeks that they had?
It's probably a little shy of three weeks, but people actually have already started paying. So even without the bill, they were able to go online and use the city's, um, payment processing site
Yeah.
to check their current bill and either mail a check or actually pay it then and there. So this is sort of close to three weeks, but also giving them sort of a little meat in the middle between the people that had already proactively gone and done that and other people that were waiting for bills.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. I have Councilwoman Warwick followed by Councilman Coghill. Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, so just when we say the, the vendor, is that Jordan Tax Service?
It is not.
Oh, okay.
No, we contract with a vendor out of California. They do all the printing of all the tax bills, not just real estate. They do business tax as well, and then they mail them. So.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so, yeah, this, there's obviously been a lot of calls and such. So, um, and just because we had an exchange about this this morning. So for folks who are paying online, uh, there is a 2.35% fee if you pay with a credit card.
Mm-hmm.
But you can also pay by each check.
Right. You can do an electronic-
Just 50%.
It's 50 cents.
50 cents, that's what I mean, yeah.
So if you enter in your banking account information, like you would from a check, your information from your check
Okay.
and use the electronic check or EFT payment as opposed to using a credit card.
Okay.
It's actually a flat 50 cent fee.
Okay.
Which is, it probably gets to us a little bit faster because it's H-E-A-C-H. It either goes same day or next day.
Okay.
And it's automatic draft from your bank account.
Okay.
But it's a flat 50 cent fee. So it's actually cheaper than a stamp, which is now over 60 cents.
Right. So, and that is essentially the same, I mean, you're just entering the numbers like you would enter your credit card number online.
Right. But just from your bank account and not your credit card information.
Right, right. So, right. So just for the public to know. So would it also be possible, because I know, like, you know, there's lots of, like, Facebook chatter and, like, the various neighborhood groups, just to have, like, a graphic that maybe has that information too with the link to pay online and the info about the fees?
Um, I could see what we could do.
That would be helpful because that would just, then it's, everybody has the same thing and we can just throw it up on all the neighborhood groups and, great?
I'll, I'll see what's possible. So I don't know how fast they could get something like that done with a link, but we could try.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How about you?
Good.
Good. So the vendor, who is the vendor?
It's, um, hold on. I'm blanking for a moment. We've had a contract with them for several years already.
That was my, that's what I'm trying to get to. So we have used them in the past?
Yes. They're not a new, and actually it was just, we rebid this every year. And so they actually have won the bid again this year, so.
Is this the same vendor where we had this kind of mix-up in the past? Do you remember three, four years ago, people were not?
I don't, I can't say if it was or not. It might have been, but maybe for a different reason, so.
So do you communicate with the vendor? Who communicate, I mean, why, why is the vendor not know our date?
Well, just, I'll explain how the whole process works. It might be a little
Yeah, sure, sure.
Interesting. So we, they actually have a calendar. So they not only mail real estate, but they mail business tax. And they are issued a calendar every year of when we expect those bills to be sent.
Right.
So during, the real estate process is pretty long and involved because it involves us getting a file from Allegheny County, which we use, and then overlay all of the tax abatements like Act 77 and Act 50. They are, my real estate team has to work with B3 in order to produce the billing file. So once the billing file is whole, we send it to the vendor ahead of time where we actually start, they'll run copies of bills and we proof them, which also includes running them through the scanner to make sure that when we're processing payments in large volume, that the scanners are picking up all of the data that it needs to in order to process someone's payment. After the county certifies the values, which they didn't do until the 18th of January this year, then we give, if all is approved on our end with the proofs and the mailing vendor, then we give the go-ahead to print. In the past, it's worked that when they say that it's approved, the vendor immediately prints, executes the print job, and mails them. This year, when they approved the proofs, what they didn't realize was that they were actually not only approving the information on the proof, but also a mailing date of January 30th. So we actually approved proofs a week prior to them being mailed. So they sat there for a whole week before they were even delivered to the post office for distribution.
Right.
So in their defense, there was a new contact on their end. And then our end, there were people that hadn't gone through that whole process in the past. So new people on both ends produced mass miscommunication, which wound us where we're at, so.
You may not know the answer to this, but, so I'm just gonna use, throw out a figure. If, say, we have $10 million in real estate taxes coming in, okay? Who regulates that? Who makes sure that we collect it? I mean, is there a, I guess, a database that says, you know, so-and-so has paid or has not paid their taxes?
The real estate tax database does. So all that information goes either through the scanning system or if someone pays in person, it goes to the, the cashiering system that's, you know, run in the cashier's office. All that data is collected and then each day it's actually uploaded into the real estate tax system. And that's where-
And if somebody doesn't pay, then that's when we bring, turn them over to Jordan?
Well, we did, but not anymore.
Oh, Jordan's not, no longer.
Right.
And what company are we using there now?
We're not. It's, we're keeping it here.
We're doing that in-house?
We will be doing it in-house, yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Can we handle that?
Yes.
I don't know what Jordan costs a year, but I imagine it was a significant amount.
I wouldn't say Jordan costs the city, but Jordan costs the taxpayer. So when someone is already in the rears on prior year taxes, Jordan charges a collection fee. Exactly. So they keep the collection fee
Interesting.
and they give us the face tax that was, you know, the link went.
I see. Okay, so there's a fee if you're late and Jordan comes knocking, they, that's how, that's how they get paid. We don't have a contract with them saying, you know, this much money.
They charge a percentage plus they charge any other related costs to the collection process.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so again, we'll be saving the taxpayers money, those of us who are late anyway.
Right.
At the same time, you're confident we can handle the bill?
Yeah, and most likely will actually realize the tax that's owed faster because the way the Jordan tax contract works is that they would take their fees and any out-of-pocket expenses, they reimburse themselves, you know, first or get a larger portion of before we start seeing. Right. So if you're on a payment plan, especially, this is where this is important, is that the portion of your payment that goes to your payment plan, like X amount of it, is going to fees and then we're getting the remainder. So if we're able to keep that in-house, so not only are the taxpayers gonna save money, but the, the money comes directly to us without fees attached.
Will we be charging a late fee for those?
We will only charge penalty and interest once we file a lien. So a lien has to be filed on the property before we can charge pen, right? Any penalty and interest.
Takes a long time for us to take that approach now.
It, it could, and there might be some other
Right, right.
things going on before we would decide to file.
So if somebody doesn't pay on time now, and as long as their home doesn't go and we don't put a lien on their home, then they still pay the same amount without fees?
Yes.
Okay.
Until we lien it.
Yeah. And that's the difference between us doing it in-house and Jordan doing it. Interesting. Okay. My other question is this. So now we have to re-educate the public, you know, as to, oh, guess what? You still have your three weeks to, you know, get the discount or however it might be. What's, does that cost us money to publicize this and get it out there or to make sure that the public knows of?
Well, for, well, obviously, I guess, for the, um, the amount of time that it would take, you know, city personnel to actually put, put it out there for not issuing something in the newspaper where we pay an advertising fee, that would be a cost.
Right. Not to mention our labor, in-house labor.
It would be in-house labor that would be-
Which we pick up that tab. The vendor does not pick that tab up, right?
Right.
Okay. I mean, I don't even know how you put a dollar amount on that, especially you could add up the hours of the people who have invested into trying to re-educate or re-inform everybody.
Right.
And if there's mailing or, like you said, any digital advertising, that cost would be there too. I would suggest we should pass that on to the vendor if they're the ones that are at fault in getting it out in a timely manner.
Well, it's our fault too, I would say. You know, I mean-
That's good, didn't it? Okay. Understood, yeah.
I'm not gonna say it's totally their fault. We're gonna place blame where blame is due. I mean, better follow-up would have-
Understood, yeah.
We probably would have caught it earlier, you know, and we wouldn't have been in this position, but-
Yeah, so we can't put it squarely on-
I, I wouldn't say so. I would say it's probably both, it's both parties.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, um, that's it. Again, I hearken back to what happened, I, I can't even, I don't even remember how many years ago, four, five years ago, people weren't getting their tax, they weren't getting their bills, I think, or?
I don't know if that was the case.
I'm just curious, it's the same vendor.
There was an issue with COVID when we had issues processing and there was a huge, there was a huge backlog. And so it took us a long time to work through that.
Yeah, and we're not collecting, that's our income. So at the very least, we need to collect our income.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Councilman. So we do have second round. We also, I will note, we have a, an amendment to the originally introduced bill, which at some point we will have to, to take a vote on and consider. But before that, I did, I did have a few questions for you.
Sure.
And I, I have not asked you these, um, they just came to mind now. So I've not asked you these before, so I'm putting you a little bit on the spot. But you mentioned B3, and I know that we have a one-year extension with that software. Do you think that any future software that we can get, whether it's off the shelf or it's something else, would help your department, you know, increase efficiency when it comes to the real estate processing?
Absolutely. So the, the CSS impact, so much of this process is manual, and I know I probably sound like a broken record, but it's the God's honest truth. A lot of these things that we have to do in order to even produce the billing file should literally, I'm not gonna say completely go away, but get rid of a lot of those steps that we have to undertake in order to do this. Additionally, and this currently works with the same mailing vendor on the business tax end, there's a schedule that we set within the system that automatically generates a billing file and places it in a file for the vendor to pick up. So they're alerted when there's something there. They automatically pick the file up, produce proofs, send them back to the business tax manager who approves or makes adjustments, and then the bills are mailed out. So there's a lot less, like, hands-on, you know, areas where there could be potential miscommunication or dropping the ball. Like, it's all, it's, it's a seamless, pretty seamless, actually. I won't say always, but it works pretty easily where this process, because the, the systems are so antiquated, there's a lot of room for error.
So you'll flag that for us when we're considering that new software, that new system?
We are, actually, we're starting, we have meetings with them, I think, in the next week or so to pick up. We had already started developing real estate when we sort of put it on hold to go back and sort of fix some things with business tax. And we're actually getting ready to pick the real estate portion back up. So by the end of the year, that should, I would hope, that it would all be completed as well as an online portal for residents. So residents would be able to go in, if they're so inclined, and get a copy of their own bill or their own, you know, tax receipt and check on the status of a payment, especially if they paid online. They could see if, if a check's been cashed and applied to their account, or if there was a credit card payment made, it would show as pending. So all of these things would be more accessible to the resident themselves instead of having to, you know, call and rely and get upset if they can't get through on telephones. Like, it would leave our staff open to do other things and the information would be more accessible to them, so.
Thank you. My, my second and last question is, um, is there anything that would prevent us from or make it difficult to align our dates with the county's tax dates?
The debt service payments.
Okay.
So the county, they don't start collecting, I don't think, until April, but our first debt service payment is due by March 1st. So by the end of this month, we have to have money in the coffers to get out the door to make sure that we're on time.
I, I heard from a couple people that it would be helpful if, you know, they really only had to think about it once and it was aligned with the county. So I just wanted to ask. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So moving on to second round, I have Councilman Wilson. So moving on to second round, I have Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I just wanted to revisit the, the timeline here, so the. So typically, people are given three weeks to, uh, to pay the, the, for the discount, and how much is the discount?
It's two percent. It's either on the gross, if you pay the gross amount, or if you pay in installments on the first installment.
What, what's the, um, like, how did the three-week get? Like, is that just arbitrary or was it?
It's arbitrary, it's not set anywhere. No. And at times, it's even been longer than three weeks, it's basically as soon as we can get that. Billing file out the door and bills in people's hands, we do it.
Is there like a date that's put on it, that's something that we legislate prior to?
We usually try to have them out by the second or.
We legislate the date, but. When someone's printing it.
No, we don't.
And sending it out.
No. It's just internal.
And then have we had this happen previously?
There have been times in the past when it's happened.
Where we're like getting it out and then the date is essentially shortened.
Yes, but they've had to extend by doing, I think Director Lanier and Treasurer Lanier, I think, has had to do it in the past. Once or twice.
Alright, and so, uh, what would be the, the three-week span? So maybe, could you, have, actually, could you tell me your estimate of what the, the rough? You know, average, average time is.
We usually try to have that file out into the vendor. And to start printing and mailing somewhere around the middle of January, so it goes somewhere around. After the county certifies, so they didn't certify until the eighteenth. But usually around the middle of the month is when the, we usually ha- make sure that they have it. And hit the go button.
So would you say?
Middle of January.
A month is usually the average of when they, they usually have a month to, to get that in.
Yeah, about three to four weeks.
Uh, I'd like to make it a amendment to extend this date then. From, since it's not gonna be passed till the thirteenth to give people a little more leeway to actually get the bill in, so this is, the, the date is. The sixteenth, and so to effectively give people, let's just say, three weeks, that would just be another three days.
Like the nineteenth?
Or four days, yeah, what, was this, is there any, any round reason why it's on the sixteenth?
Only because it was, it, it fell on a Friday, I guess, the tenth is actually on a Saturday. Which was why it was on.
So Friday, Friday is on a sixteenth, I can bring my calendar up.
The Friday, sixteen is a Friday, so then it would be the nineteenth would be the Monday after that.
Can we extend it, uh, well, can we, I'd like to make an amendment to extend it to the next Friday, but we'll extend it to this one first. And then I can make a verbal amendment to change or to propose the motion for that change. Let's.
Do I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
For a second, okay, so motion, amendment is on the table, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and then in light of the discussion, just learning that there's really not a set date. For this, we're really going off what people are used to and, um, if members would. Calendar isn't as. Okay, so. Have interrogatory?
Interrogatory.
Uh, I know, or, or I know, I'll have the Budget Director, yeah, you wanna come up?
Good morning. Council Budget Director, um, you saw me just come up to give a helpful hint, hopefully, um, the nineteenth is a. So I don't know how everybody feels about the twentieth, but.
Well, I was gonna say, so we got the sixteenth, I was gonna extend it to the twenty-third. Just give people a week, like additional week since we're not even gonna fully pass until the thirteenth. So it'll just be extended a week from the sixteenth.
I mean, I would defer to Director Gula, I know that, the, the cash flow issues that. We've talked about, we wanna make sure we have enough money in the bank to make those debt service payments and also payroll and everything like that.
It's based off of past individuals that paid. Right, the projection is based off of past individuals that paid the two percent discount, which we were, we're, we're. We're basing on, you know, what we've passed, the time period we've given on for people in the past, right?
And keep in mind too, we also, it's, it's also not that we have it in our hand on the sixteenth either, it's the postmark. So as long as it's postmarked from the due date, by the due date, they still get the discount.
I gotcha. Or they gotta go online and.
Or they can, right, if they, if they have to do something same day, they would have to go online. Could we split the difference and say the twentieth?
What's that? Okay, let's do, let's do the twentieth. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the date from, uh, in section A. I'm sorry, in section one A. One, two, three. Fourth line, uh, change February sixteenth to February twentieth. And then. Furthermore, in the amendment, there will be, the date will be the tw- also in the same line. It would then say begin, then beginning February twenty-first.
Twenty-first to the twenty-ninth.
Two dates, the two dates that will be changed will be sixteenth to the twentieth and then seventeenth to the twenty-first. And then. The twenty-ninth stays the same.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then we also would have to make a change to B one, and that's in the last. The last sentence where it states February sixteenth would change to February twentieth. And then again, in, in D sixteen would change to, February sixteenth would change to February twentieth.
I think you have that right, that makes, I tracked that, that makes sense.
So we have a motion to amend the amendment to extend the deadline by four additional days as stated by Councilman Wilson, do we have a second? Second, Councilman Coghill, all those in favor of this amendment, of the amendment, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay, the amendment, um, passes. Uh, we still have the actual amendment on the table for discussion and I have Councilwoman Warwick.
Oh, yeah, I was just, yeah, cuz we had written about extending it to the Friday, so that's good, the halfway mark. Uh, but since I, uh, have, so, uh, just in terms of. Just getting back to Jordan Tax Service since we're here, what, what does Jordan Tax Service do for the city now?
So now they collect the, um, earned income tax. And that is state legislated.
Oh, okay.
Right, that's not a contract that we necessarily have control over, the state created a. Tax Collection District of which Jordan Tax Service was named the Tax Collector for. So, and part of the Tax Collection District is not just the city, it's the school district in Mount Oliver.
Okay, cuz I had a giant issue with Jordan Tax Service once, just as a, where they didn't. Notice something for literally seven years, and, I'm not kidding. Seven years and then I got a bill out of the, my employer who was out of, not a Pittsburgh employer, right, so was. Taking the wrong percentage, taking like one point five instead of three, whatever, and. Seven years, right, and I get this bill for like thousands of dollars and the city was. Uh, you know, after like lots of haggling, very difficult to deal with Jordan Tax Service, by the way, like getting through, I couldn't get, you know, no one, just. Um, they would only call me, like I couldn't call them, you see what I mean, it was just very frustrating. And the city ended up waiving the, um, the interest, which was like the bulk of it. But I still ended up paying over five hundred dollars in fees to Jordan Tax Service, so. Anyway.
But we're trying to manage what we can do with getting rid of the prior year real estate.
Yeah, maybe that's something I talk with the Controller's Office about, just in terms of sort of taking a look at. How things are working, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, I just had, um, a question, uh, I'm, I'm looking at, at the dates and there's, you know, the gross due date, first installment, second installment. At, at the point of July thirty-first, if you haven't, you know, made any payments, is, are you considered, you know, late, are your. On, on your taxes at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, after July thirty-first.
Okay, and then is there any, you know, uh, like penalty that begins, you know, at that point?
No, not until. So after July thirty-first, we would consider you delinquent. The city could take action after July thirty-first. Generally, we have not and have given residents at least until the end of the year to make good. Before, in the past, we, we would turn over at the beginning of the year any delinquencies over to Jordan Tax for collections. Only this year that's not happening, at least not for City Library and Parks, this, the school district portion, because they did not. You know, e- exit the contract with the city, the school district portion will go there, however. The city hasn't even, because of the lien costs, that County, Allegheny County had raised the lien costs. And the way that they actually charge for liens now, the city would actually have to pay for separate liens. At one point, we would pay one lien cost and file a lien for city and school tax altogether. They now make them separate, so we would have to file like four separate. Charges and four different liens for city, school, library and parks. Which is why we haven't really filed liens in a very long time, so Jordan is paying. They're, they're charging people their service fees, but we're not really collecting much on penalty and interest unless there was a lien filed. Like prior, we haven't filed a lot because they were just too expensive, so. We should be able to now do that part of it, but I think we would probably give residents, and this is all. We haven't have everything on this end all worked out, the contract doesn't really officially end until the end of June, so. But we'll get to that when we come to it, but. Does that help?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just a couple of follow-up. So let me ask you this, how much do we receive in real estate taxes per year, like last year, let's use.
Per year? So last year we got about a hundred and fifty million dollars.
Hundred and fifty million, okay, um, I was way low with my ten.
That's the average.
Okay, yeah, so a hundred and fifty million dollars. You know, without having a late fee, I know for me, you know, when I get a parking ticket in Dormont, it's like you could pay ten dollars today. Or you could pay forty dollars if you let a week go by, you know, so I'm, makes, incentivizes me to pay, you know, so. Being that Jordan is no longer gonna be part of the process, we really don't have. An incentive other than someday we may file a lien on your property for people to pay.
Well, we do, it's the treasurer's sale.
Treasurer's sale, right, right.
Which is how we ended up with the giant property inventory, but. But that is the recourse for not paying your taxes leaned or unleaned, so.
And, and today, we're paying four separate entities for, to apply the lien.
We would have.
What's the lien cost, what's it cost the city to press a lien?
Forty to sixty dollars.
Oh, okay, that's not too bad.
Well, times four.
Right, so we pay this, if the school board wants to place a lien, we pay that? Oh, we do?
That was part of the contract.
Seventy-five percent, or, or, I mean. You know, it tripled. Okay, so, so we'll never recover that cost though, because, you know, if somebody's late on their taxes, we're not charging them a late fee. But whatever it costs us to apply that lien, we eat it.
Right, but we could also, so we eat it, but then. They become responsible for paying it if it gets leaned, so that cost would get rolled into. What we expended as part of the collection process for someone that is past due. Along with penalty and interest.
Right, right. Okay, um. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no further discussion, um, we have a motion, a second on amendment to Bill one twenty-three and the amendment, not the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment say aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay, amendment is, um, approved. Um, now for a final vote on our final, um, standing committee. Recommendation on Bill one twenty-three as amendment. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, affirmative recommendation, thank you, directors. And, um, thank you, council colleagues for your questions, that moves us on to Bill number sixty.
Bill sixty, resolution amending resolution six eighty-three of two thousand and twenty-two entitled. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation. For the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. To support youth sports programming in each council district to add the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation as a signatory on grant awards.
Motion to approve?
Discussion, Councilman Coghill?
Yep, thank you, you know, I just really wanted to thank, uh, Councilwoman Teresa Kill Smith for pursuing this and Dick's Sporting. Um, you know, they've been a good partner and, you know, they stepped up and I think last year we had a press conference on it. Uh, I just wanted to recognize that, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, affirmative recommendation, moves us on to Bill seventy-one.
Bill seventy-one, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dicky McCamey in Chillicothe, P.C. For expert legal services in connection with a litigation matter in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. For an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents over one year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, affirmative recommendation, Bill seventy-two.
Bill seventy-two, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of a single payment in two thousand and twenty-four. To the Allegheny County Health Department at a cost not to exceed eight thousand dollars in full and final settlement of enforcement proceedings. Filed at ASB twenty-one eleven oh three for violations of Article twenty-one, air pollution control.
Motion to approve discussion?
Approve with discussion, do we have a second? Councilman Wilson.
Is there anyone here that could speak to the bill?
Councilman Wilson, it's John DiMarco, how you doing?
Good, good, how are you?
Good, good, um, yes, this, this bill goes back to a twenty-seventeen consent agreement. Between the city and the Allegheny County Health Department, to which the city and its demolition contractors were to comply with certain regulations. Regarding asbestos abatement, uh, in demolitions. The county cited city and several contractors, uh, during twenty-twenty-one, twenty. Twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two timeframe. Uh, for failing to provide asbestos surveys, failure to provide notification to the health department for. Uh, planned demolitions, there were a host of charges stemming from that consent agreement back to twenty-seventeen. They, uh, filed the charges, my predecessor, Sarah Spears, who was the attorney in the Law Department for PLI. Took an appeal, I then took over the case. And we had a hearing scheduled for, a three-day hearing scheduled through this past December, uh, we end up settling the case. Uh, we were looking at thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of fines, we were, were able to reduce our contribution to eight thousand dollars. Uh, two contractors are paying thirty-five hundred dollars each for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. The confusion from the city was they were relying upon the contractors to, uh, submit the proper paperwork. Which they were not doing, and the city as the owner of the property is responsible by law to submit the proper paperwork. Uh, we have gone through, uh, a lot of discussions with the County Health Department. We are now in a situation where I have a representative from PLI and a representative from the County Health Department. Emailing and communicating with each other almost on a daily basis, so these violations will not occur in the future.
Great, great, thanks. It's helpful to understand what this bill is talking about, thanks, I appreciate it. And sorry if I missed a briefing, that explained that.
Not at all, there was no briefing. If you would like to call for an executive session or further briefing, I'm happy to accommodate.
I'm good, thanks.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you, Assistant Solicitor. That brings us to, um, Bill number seventy-three.
Bill seventy-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution seven ninety-seven of two thousand and seventeen as amended, effective December twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and eighteen Capital Budget and the two thousand and eighteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-three Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Complete Streets by seventy thousand, five hundred, eighty-one dollars and six cent and Increasing Street Resurfacing by seventy thousand, five hundred, eighty-one dollars and six cent.
Can we read seventy-four with that, please?
Bill seventy-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight sixty-three of two thousand and eighteen, effective January first, two thousand and nineteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and nineteen Capital Budget and the two thousand and nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Complete Streets by seventy-two thousand, eight hundred, fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cent and Increasing Street Resurfacing by seventy-two thousand, eight hundred, fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cent.
Motion to approve.
Second, Councilwoman Warwick, with discussion?
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to add, because, um, I just want to understand why, and I see, actually, on the next page, Bill seventy-five, um, we're increasing complete streets, uh, with a grant, looks like. Um, you know, why we're reducing it then? He, you know, we're getting a grant to increase it, but then we're reducing it for paving. Complete streets is obviously his neighborhood traffic calming, and it's a big priority, so I'd like to know why we're reducing it.
So, for Bill seventy-three and seventy-four, it's my understanding that this is to address an accounting issue, and we're just, um, correcting a, um, an accounting issue, a previous accounting issue, between complete streets and paving. But then the, Bill seventy-five is related to, um, Sylvan Avenue Trail Construction in District Three.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, an accounting issue, I guess I'd like to, so, in what's, what is the accounting issue? Is, if there's anybody who can speak to that, yeah? Yeah, just come to the table, sure. Sure, I mean, yeah.
Uh, morning, Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer. My, our understanding of this is that the, there was an invoice that was paid, um, from the incorrect deliverable line, so this is really just to back that money in to make it whole again. That was my one-sentence explanation.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Bills seventy-three and seventy-four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, affirmative recommendation. Seventy-five.
Bill seventy-five, Resolution Further Amending, excuse me, Further Amending Resolution Number seven twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, Effective December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Budget, the two thousand and twenty-three Community Development Program, and the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Complete Streets by two hundred, twenty-six thousand, sixty-eight dollars to Account For Additional Federal Highway Administration Funding Being Received by the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second. Uh, we have a motion to approve in a second, discussion? Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, just, uh, is this matching money, is that why we're? To account for additional federal highway administration funding, that's what makes me answer it, that's, yeah.
We have, uh, it looks like we have a number of people who could speak to this. Uh, Director Lucas, or anyone else who would like to, or, um, Director McDevitt is indicating he might have an answer as well.
Nope, okay, introduce yourself again, I guess.
Pete McDevitt, Council Budget, um, so this is, uh, we're increasing the, um, complete streets line item of, because we're receiving federal highway funding for, uh, the Sylvan Avenue project, Sylvan Avenue Trail Construction District.
So, we're increasing it not to get the federal?
No, that's exactly what it is, it's because we're receiving that amount of money from the federal highway.
Oh, so it's matching money?
I mean, it's not even matching, it's just they're giving it to us.
Oh, okay, so, uh, so this is like a grant?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're increasing the budget to account for that.
I have no issues with grants.
Yeah.
Sorry, I called you up there, yeah, exactly, thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, affirmative recommendation. Thank you, Director. And that moves us on to Bill eighty-nine.
Bill eighty-nine, Resolution Amending Resolution nine oh nine of two thousand and twenty-three, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for two thousand and twenty-four pursuant to Chapter one seventy of the City Code to reduce, to reduce the cost of employee parking.
No, it's the, uh, intention of the bill sponsor to hold for one week, do we have a motion to hold? Motion to hold?
Motion to hold for one week.
Give me a second?
Second.
Okay, Bill is, eighty-nine is held for one week, thank you. That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion to approve invoices?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Do we have a motion to approve P-cards?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill sixty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for the Provision of Medical Direction Services at a Cost Not to Exceed thirty dollars over three years.
Uh, motion to approve, it's a whopping amount, so I don't really have any questions.
Second.
Motion proven in a second, all those in favor say aye, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill seventy-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution four forty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, which provided for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the bridge over Route fifty-one near Woodruff Street, also referred to as the Parking Lot Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed six hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars. This resolution serves to only, to authorize only the reimbursement agreement, an increase of twenty-eight thousand dollars at a total not to exceed cost of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventy-nine.
Bill seventy-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Receive Grant Funding from the Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Redevelopment LP to Benefit the Rehabilitation of City-Owned Ammon Recreation Center and Park in the Hill District Neighborhood in the Amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill one oh two, Resolution Amending Resolution eight ninety-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the cohorts of PGH Lab and further authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services through PGH Lab at a total cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars over one year. The purpose of the amending legislation is to correct the name of one of the cohort companies, and the amending legislation is not adding any additional funding.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. Bill sixty-seven.
Bill sixty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of East Civis, Inc. for One-Year Subscription in an Amount Not to Exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill sixty-eight, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for thirteen fifteen Western Avenue at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, affirmative recommendation. Bill sixty-nine.
Bill sixty-nine, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for three twenty Cedarhurst Street at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill seventy.
And Bill seventy, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable in Favor of Allegheny League of Municipalities for One-Year Membership Dues in an Amount Not to Exceed nine thousand dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, affirmative recommendation. That concludes our agenda, we have some meeting announcements. Next week, Council will hold its regular meeting on Tuesday, February thirteenth at ten a.m., and a standing meeting on Wednesday, February fourteenth at ten a.m. And also, on Tuesday, February thirteenth at one thirty p.m., Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill twenty twenty-three dash twenty eighty-nine as it pertains to updating zoning code standards relating to childcare parking. And on Wednesday, February fourteenth at one thirty, Council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-seven as it relates to authorization for property owners to operate major public destination facility electronic sign, a large video display at West General Robinson Street and Mazerosky Way. To register to speak at these hearings, please fill out the signup form on the Council meeting webpage. You may also call the Clerk's Office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Speaker registration closes at twelve noon. Do we have any discussion from Council members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse, uh, let's see, we don't have any opposite members? Uh, excuse the opposite members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.